All right, so I think we all believed at some point this would all be over. And we would not be doing this, but we still are doing this. And in some ways, it's nice. Many of you like me are not having to drive out on a cold night. And that'll probably be a part of our future, but I'm calling to order our umpteenth time by remote, the Northwest Regional Planning Commission at 7:02. And let me get to the agenda. Yep, here we go. So are there any adjustments to the agenda? It was mailed and emailed. Okay, I hear none. We will then again, welcome all of you. I thank you for your service to our region. It's a real pleasure to work with all of you and look forward to doing so tonight. I'd like to start the introductions. And I think the way that I'll do it so that it doesn't have people walk on top of each other or talk on top of each other, probably a better word. I will start with the people in my list here. And I think it's a good place to start, and that's Marietta. Marietta, you're our newest. We'd like to welcome you here. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Marietta Shelton. I've lived in St. Albans for over 30 years. Raised our children here, worked here and love this community. And it's, it's great as I phase out one part of my career to have more time to do something like this.
Well, welcome. And we're really excited to have you a part of our little body here.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. So I'll call out your name from my list and you can introduce yourself. So next is Richard.
Hi, I'm Highgate Representative, live next to Canadian border. Ex-farmer, well, ex-farmer, semi-retired.
You're always a farmer, Richard.
That's true.
You've lived a life to prove it.
I went out and cut wood today, believe it or not.
Great, great. All right, Vincent.
Vincent Hickey from Berkshire. I've been living in Berkshire for 40 years and I'm on the Berkshire Select Board.
Great. Well, welcome tonight for our meeting.
Thank you.
And Brian, Brian Dubey, in case there's two Bryans out there.
Uh, Brian Dubey, Fairfield. And when I grew up, I wanted to be just like Richard. Cutting wood on a, I was hauling wood out of the sugar woods today, Richard, myself. Too cold to tap.
I agree with you. We're kind of almost too cold to wood.
Oh, that's, that's what's great about Vermont. Thank you both. Lori.
Lori Rupel, I live in Fletcher.
Thank you, Lori. And oh, so my list moves. Oh, this is, this is going to be interesting. Okay, Bob, Bob Bierman.
Bob Bierman, I'm from South Hero. And I moved my wood yesterday because I don't like working when it's below zero. But I didn't have to go feed the sheep, so.
Yeah, they require it daily. The wood can be put off another day. Yes. All right, and we'll go to Harold.
Harold Garrett, and I represent the town of Swam.
Hello, Harold. Kirk.
Eric Wade from Georgia.
Thank you, Kirk. Peter.
Peter Zamor from South Hero, watching the ice freeze over to New York State and looking forward to skating.
All right. Cheapest ferry ride you'll ever have, free. All right, Sylvia.
Sylvia Johnson, Isle of Monte, have been on the commission, I think, 15 years or something like that. I work for the state of Vermont Agency of Ag and I do also own a farm on the island, so.
All right. Thank you. All right, Yvonne.
Yvonne Dandran Franklin.
Neil.
Yes, Neil Spear, Swanton Village President. I've been on the board for quite a few years, I think 20 plus. I think Catherine could. But I'm Swanton Village President, representative to Northwest Regional Planning for Swanton Village, so.
Great, thanks Neil. Rowena.
Yeah, Rowena Brown from Richford.
Thank you, Rowena. Andy.
Andy Oiling, North Hero.
Thank you, Andy. And Howard.
Howard Demars, Representative from Grand Isle. And as you can see, my claim to fame is I'm Anna Marie's husband.
I hope she feels that way, too. All right. Yeah, you, you can keep that private. So then we'll go on, I'm looking. Elizabeth, yes.
Elizabeth Nance, I am the better half of the Swanton Village delegation.
Okay, now, now we've reached the level. Good, good. Okay, let's see where this gets us. All right, we will move to Lynn. Oh, no, Lynn, we were on a roll, Lynn. I'm sorry.
Lynn Douglas Fletcher.
Great, thanks Lynn. And then let's see. Sarah.
Sarah Had, representing Fairfax.
And very official looking with the office there behind you. Very nice. So, so we are just, Vincent Hickey.
You got me already. I'm from Berkshire.
Oh, sorry. And Al, there's a new one. Not sure, you might have muted yourself, Al.
Al Bojel from St. Albans Town. I'm not a farmer, but I drink milk.
That's good. They need drinkers.
Drink Bailey's got the both.
All right, I think we'll start to hit some staff and see if there are others as well. But we'll start with Catherine.
Hi, Catherine DePetrin staff.
Thank you, Catherine. And Bethany.
Hi, everyone. Bethany Remmers staff.
Great, thank you, Bethany. And Daya.
Or is it Dean? Hi, Daya Dublin. Yes, you got it.
I was right. Okay.
Yeah, I turned my camera off by accident.
That's okay. And Dean.
Good evening, everybody. Dean Pierce on the staff.
Thank you. Egan.
Murphy, St. Albans Town.
Thank you, Egan. And let me see if I've left anybody out. And then Marlena.
Yes, Marlena Valenta, new staff.
Welcome. And what do you do with the staff, Marlena? You should.
I am, I am the Energy and Climate Planner.
Great, yeah, we were. Yeah, we were glad to have you at the last project review committee. Thank you. Michelle is here as a guest.
Thank you so much, Michelle Boomhauer, the Director of Policy Planning and Intermodal Development for the Agency of Transportation.
Oh, my. Well, thank you for being here, Michelle. And let me verify that I've hit everybody. I think I've got everybody on my list, but I might have left someone out. Is there anyone that I did not call on?
About Yvonne.
Yes, I did get Yvonne. But thank you, he deserves an encore, for sure. Okay, so thank you all for your introductions. And I don't know if I've missed any member of the public, but this is our moment for entertaining any comments, questions, or whatever might be of interest from the public. Is there any public comment whatsoever?
I think the bill is Bill, Bill Nylund's passing. On like man.
Okay, so that's recent, Richard?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
Good, good person to have on the boards and very knowledgeable. I think he was in, he was in his 80s. Not that it makes any difference, but.
Yeah, well, the closer you get to 80, the younger the you think.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Hopefully, everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes that were in the emailed and postal service of your package for this month's meeting. Is there anyone that has a motion relative to those minutes? So Elizabeth, it sounds like you wanted to move to approve. And do I hear a second?
Second, Brian Dubey.
Thank you, Brian. And is there any discussion about the minutes, changes, corrections? I would just add that I really appreciate the great care and effort taken to record those efficiently and effectively. If there's no other comment, we'll move towards a vote. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of the December 2021 meeting, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. And are there any abstentions?
Abstained, Bill.
Okay, Howard, I understand. We have one abstention, but I don't think that that would necessitate a roll call vote. It sounds like without any kinds of nays, we'll move on. So the minutes are approved. And I really want to thank Michelle Boomhauer for coming tonight. It's wonderful to have guests to speak to various issues of concern to the region. And Michelle comes from the trans, she introduced herself. I've had the great honor to work with several people from the Vermont Agency of Transportation. And I find them exceptional in every level of the agency from Mr. Flynn down to those folks who are out there on Route 36, making sure that the road between Bakersfield and St. Albans is maintained so very effectively. So welcome, Michelle. And is there anything you would like to say in introduction, Catherine?
No, I think you said it, you said it well. I'm happy to have Michelle, a former colleague, years, years and years ago, she was the RPC Director in the Mile. So we always love having her back at RPC Board meeting.
Great, great. All right, Michelle, you've got the floor.
Well, thank you very much. As Catherine mentioned, this is like homecoming for me to be with the Regional Planning Commission and your meeting this evening. I had the great pleasure to be part of the LaMile Valley Rail Trail kickoff meeting last night. And so I'm all in the Franklin County region where I actually, and Grand Isle also, where I actually live here in Georgia. So I'm here this evening to talk about the equity work that the Agency of Transportation is undertaking and how we're approaching it and how it builds on work we have done previously as part of our mission as the agency. And as Catherine said, I've worked in regional planning before, not only in the Mile County, but at the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission, where I was Transportation Director and we did also an extensive amount of equity work and move, felt like we moved the ball forward a bit at that time. And, and now it's another opportunity to continue to advance. So it's great to be able to share this with you. I'm going to move to sharing my screen. I have a short PowerPoint presentation and then I'm happy to engage in dialogue and answer questions as we go forward this evening.
Great, thanks, Michelle.
Okay, is my screen come up as live?
Yes.
Thank you. Great. That's wonderful. So this work, while it was actually requested officially by, through the transportation bill last year, it's, it's a process whereby we're going to work with the state's 11 regional planning commissions to undertake a comprehensive analysis of existing programs that we deliver in partnership and develop a recommendation on an equity framework, which we will use to work through our engagement processes and our analysis of not only the projects that will make it into the annual transportation program, but also sort of the, the foundation of that, which is the project prioritization process, which you folks are partners in with us. And we want to be able to advance mobility equity and create a transportation system that increases mobility options for Vermonters as well as reducing air pollution and enhancing economic opportunities for folks that have traditionally been underserved by the transportation system. So that's kind of the broad overview. Should I just go back to this for a minute? What I would also say is that at the Agency of Transportation, we have been very much involved with internal training around respect, ethical, professional engagement, acknowledgement and recognizing the diversity of our workforce and how that diversity leads to and sparks more ideas, more civility. And these are all elements that we espouse. On top of that, we have federal requirements under the Title VI framework, the federal government for accessibility for folks in terms of accessibility for mobility and also anti-discrimination frameworks as well. And that federal framework, I will now say, has been further advanced by the executive order President Biden advanced in the beginning of 2021. And the statement around this Justice 40 executive order was that federal investments will be made in a manner whereby 40% of the overall investments shall flow to disadvantaged communities. And what does that mean? Well, we are still working to understand that. I think that we know that there have been historic circumstances of discrimination and displacement of people by the investments in the transportation system by providing the benefits of the transportation system disproportionately to folks that, that are not, you know, are not falling into categories where they would be labeled as disadvantaged. But the disadvantaged communities are receiving the burdens of some of the transportation system investments oftentimes. So we have been following the Federal Justice 40 Initiative. And they are advancing slowly, I would say. I've been to a few webinars and right now, it seems as though it's more of a defining the terminology and understanding the potential applications. For Vermont, I think there is a lot of income disparity in our, not only in our urban, but our rural areas. As well as, you know, the many known and unknown equity issues related to the BIPOC community or also the immigrant community. And so it will be interesting as we learn more about how Justice 40 will fit into our work on this framework. So what are we talking about when we talk about equity within the framing of transportation? This diagram I really like, you know, it basically is showing in the first frame, under inequality, a person who basically does not have the same path ahead of them nor the same tools to access that path. One person has a bike and the other person is walking and they don't have a smooth pathway to go on to. And then under equality, we begin to see evenly distributed tools and assistance. But perhaps there are still obstructions along the path that need to be addressed and considered. And then under social equity, we're beginning to identify and address inequality and understand the obstacles that are present and begin to problem solve around how to better distribute the investments and the opportunities based on social equity, which then will lead to justice. In other words, the system provides both access to tools such as the bicycle as well as opportunities in terms of a similar accessibility to a transportation resource for, in this case, to be able to, you know, undertake your daily life, getting to work, getting within your community, et cetera. So it's in the framing of this equity model that we are advancing this project. Our project team includes oversight by both AOT staff and Regional Planning Commission staff, Charlie Baker, who is the Executive Director of the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission, is serving as the key point of contact for all of the regional planning commissions. And we're also going to have a senior transportation planner who will be joining this, this group of the core technical advisory committee. Our consulting team consists of Resource Systems Group as well as Tool Design, who will be working a lot of communications platforms that we will engage through this process. And we're also very excited to have Kaya Morris and Dan Fingus from the Rights and Democracy Institute. They are a group who has most recently worked on the Vermont Climate Action Plan process. And Kaya has done work with the Agency of Natural Resources on a similar effort that they are undertaking to enhance their engagement and creation of skillsets and opportunities for, and building relationships within communities and community champions who will be able to continue to serve as partners as we work to bring information about our projects and programs and get feedback from various communities we're trying to reach through this process. So that's very exciting. So what are we going to be doing? Initially, there will be some research that's undertaken, looking at existing policies, programming, and taking an assessment of what are we doing already? What are the programs and policies and projects that we are wanting to address within this process? Looking at, you know, the populations that we are trying to gain representations from and how we will enable access to decision-making by those folks that we would like to have participate. Are there language barriers? Are there process barriers where folks don't necessarily know how to engage in our processes? Are there physical barriers to getting to meetings or are there, you know, you know, I'm trying to think about barriers related to not having a babysitter, you know, basic stuff. So looking at that. And then taking that information through the needs analysis and understanding what kind of service provision we would want to be engaging with to better serve these communities. And then looking at our core activities, like I said, the prioritization process, ongoing performance management, are we monitoring how we're doing with making these investments in communities and how we are doing with our engagement? And are we making progress with that engagement? So there will be all of those elements involved. In terms of stakeholder and public involvement, we have four communities, marginalized communities that have been proposed as our direct contact communities we will work with closely. And those include the BIPOC community in the Bennington area, second generation of new Americans in the Burlington-Wanuski area, elderly and low, probably low income and folks in the Berry and Newport area who may not traditionally have accessed our processes for, for whatever reason. I think we're finding that oftentimes people such as the elderly who may have a significant need for transportation resources are maybe not aware of all the tools that are out there. And then also low-income communities experiencing poverty. And we've targeted the Rutland area in that case. So we're trying to get to various parts of the state to find some representative communities that we can engage with. And a whole wide variety of tools will be utilized. The Center for Rights and Democracy, or the Rights and Democracy Institute has very good experience with understanding and accessibility to these communities and how to best engage with these communities. So we're hoping to learn a lot from that. And, you know, for the agency, one of our goals will be to update our public engagement plan after this whole process is completed. How do we know who we're looking for and where they are? Well, we have some great tools nowadays. There are new census tools that have come out related to identifying marginalized communities that we may want to engage with. There are now tools being developed by federal agencies. EPA has come out with a recent tool based on similar indices that we're seeing here in this map on the Rubenstein School of Environment and Natural Resources. This is a disparity index that they, environmental disparity index that they came up with. So we're starting to see a lot of these resources evolve and many of them are down to the census block level so that we can really hone in on how people or who we're looking for related to a specific project in terms of the outreach we may want to engage with. This is a great example of work that was done in Oregon. They're very far ahead of this. Not only do they have an equity index for their Department of Transportation, but they have an Office of Social Equity. So it's really great to see examples from other states where they have been very deliberative in taking these opportunities to understand how they can and will engage in bringing forth better diversity of engagement, better diversity of investment in transportation resourcing. So what does this framework look like? Well, we obviously, as you all know, with planning processes, have our vision and goals and our objectives. We're trying to, you know, get population representation and decision-making skillsets and identified and advanced understanding where we need to provide services and projects. And then using our tools such as prioritization and performance management to, to get there in terms of our objectives. And then there's a whole variety of tactics under the actions that we will identify as opportunities we can take to move forward. And like I mentioned, I think the measurement piece is really one of the core things that I'm thinking about in terms of better understanding over the long term, how we're making progress and when we may need to pivot to. better understanding over the long term, how we're making progress and when we may need to pivot to other actions. This slide is simply a summary of all the elements that will be included in the final report that we will receive, which will include the implementation plan. And like I said, this will be all encompassing in terms of our engagement with regional planning commissions. Each regional planning commission will be engaging with a specific meeting on this topic to gain input from all of you. And then there will be training opportunities for staff to identify opportunities for your organizations to to also partner with us in reaching these communities and how we will make this a sustainable and integrated part of our processes that we work on together. So in terms of the timeline, originally the legislature, when they wrote the bill last spring, said, come back to us in January with a plan and report on it to us. And so I reported on it last week and I said, this is a much more complicated than we had envisioned. And even through the request for proposal process, we found that we weren't getting the framework information that we felt we needed from the consultants who had responded. And so we sort of put out a new set of questions to those consultants and asked them to re respond to the additional information. So things have been developing in a very deliberative process, but I think it's important that we take the time it needs. This is something we've never done before and in this manner. And it's very important work in terms of laying the groundwork and the foundation going forward. So the first advisory committee meeting won't be coming up until the beginning of February. And then through the winter and summer and basically by September, all of the engagement processes, including visiting your transportation advisory committees, social outreach through the various mechanisms, community outreach will occur. And then the plan development will be coming through in October through December, this fall with a public comment process as we have a draft plan in place and then the final delivery, delivery of the equity framework. So that is the end of my story. I am sure that Catherine can make this presentation available, so you'll have my contact information if you want to reach me, but I'm going to stop sharing the screen now and then turn it over to all of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Michelle. That was really wonderful. And it's interesting that you've discovered what we discovered as we embarked on this effort to try to ensure that what we do incorporates justice equity and tries to eliminate injustice. And that it is very complicated. And so you're one of the early presenters for us over a course of months where we will learn more before we take some decisive steps. We had seen a lot of opportunity to put out something that might make a statement, but we really felt it was important to learn from your process, others and your processes. I really appreciated the slides that you showed and I do hope that we can make those available to everyone. Because I frankly couldn't write down everything that I wanted to.
I'll email it out to everybody, so you'll have a copy.
Great. Because I think that we will return to this as we move along. And I really look forward to our being a part of that stakeholder engagement because we expect that there will be a lot that our transportation advisory committee might be able to bring, but also I want to make sure that everyone here at the full commission ensure that you take advantage of these opportunities where you see in the agenda or a report for a committee for the coming weeks or month that they're going to be talking equity or they're going to be talking about something that can really help you understand how others are approaching these justice and equity issues that you tune in. It's really a great time for us now that we'll probably have hybrid meetings, which makes it easier for you to tune in while you're there at home, take an hour to listen in to, for example, the next tech meeting where we have perhaps the opportunity to start that discussion. So let me open it up and see if there are any questions from any of the others here. And you can probably just unmute your mic and jump in there unless it gets to be where there's multiple people at once. And then I'll ask if we can use hands.
And Bill, I just wanted to make sure Michelle knew that I did send out that two-page update that you provided to me too about the port of entry improvements and the connected roadway improvement. So you may get some questions about that, too.
Yeah, that's good. I hope everybody has an opportunity to take a look at that. For our region, it's one of the most important elements of transportation that can make a huge difference. We're very excited here in Franklin Grand Isle counties to think that we might someday, absent vaccination cards and COVID tests, be able to do more with our neighbors to the north and really stimulate great movement of ideas and people between these two countries. But really appreciate the work that's going on there. Let me start with that. What are we seeing as an equity issue relative to the international border?
Wow, that's a, you started with a tough question. In terms of equity related to the border, it's complicated from the sense that, you know, it's not controlled by Vermonters. You know, it's controlled by the federal governments of both Quebec, Canada and and the US Federal Customs folks. And, you know, I think that, you know, always there are concerns about how people are viewed when they're just trying to conduct normal transportation activities and whether there's bias included within the manner in which people are interviewed, you know, when you hand your passport or your driver's license card up to the the officials and, you know, are they simply looking at the information or is there a bias in involved in that? So it's, it's a difficult area and something that we don't have a lot of control over. But I think having the awareness of this is, is really important because it also can have significant impacts within our region in terms of our agricultural sector workers or immigrants, new Americans who have come here to live. And we, we want to make sure that they are feeling safe and welcome and able to undertake the travel that they may need to for whatever their personal reasons are. Oh, you're muted there.
I turned it off to avoid you hearing my dog here. But really appreciate that it is a complicated issue. But I, I really do see so much opportunity there. And we have a lot of our communities in this region that are on the border. And any, anyone else have a question?
I do, Bill.
Yeah, please.
Michelle Albojel. My question, when you talked about marginal communities, marginalized communities, you didn't mention the indigenous people of Vermont, the Abnakis. Would you or your group of people consider them as part of your help, research and services?
Yes, thank you, Al. That's a great question. And yes, indeed, the, the native inhabitants of Vermont are a distinct and recognized group of folks who are part of people who have been disadvantaged in many ways over the years by governmental policies and practices. And so while we don't have a specific outreach framework relative to that particular population, and we don't for every single population we're trying to engage with understanding. I think that through our process, we will learn where we need to undertake additional engagement. We will learn about needs that we aren't aware of today. And we will just continually evolve in terms of our process for reaching out and understanding more and learning from these, these communities who want to and need to use the transportation system.
Right. Remember, remember two things. First of all, that we as colonialists stole the land from the Abnakis. Secondly, their headquarters, I believe, is in Swanton. And I think your organization ought to reach out to them because, again, a lot of them are living in the back country and the elderly need transportation into the hospital.
Absolutely. Great points. And, you know, I think this is where the, the engagement of our regional planning commissions, knowing their communities in a way that the state, so to speak, may not know or understand are going to be really valuable partners in this process to bring forth ideas and and identify issues such as what you've just brought forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for raising that, Al. And I, I think that your point, Michelle, about, and Al, about Swanton is really important for us to think about. So if there are any kind of engagement activities, Michelle, you wouldn't mind sharing those with Catherine so that they could be passed on to the rest of the commission so that we could attend if we have the opportunity. Bob, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, and it's, Michelle, it's, it's kind of somewhat on the same, same strand on that, that forty percent for the disadvantaged communities. When you look at how the federal funding is split between transportation projects and our public transit activities, the areas that aren't very well served by public transit such as Grand Isle County with our, our one route and Franklin County, and you already mentioned the Swanton, very limited access. So we're interested in understanding how we really end up interpreting that forty percent to reach partly disadvantaged and partly our unaccessed areas and how we can, how we can focus that, as you know, I mean, our public transit isn't a, is terribly underfunded for what we need to do to supply.
Thank you, Bob. That's a great question. Yeah, I think understanding what is meant by that, by the Biden administration will be incredibly important in terms. I think in particular, as it relates to some of the discretionary funding programs that are now enabled under the federal infrastructure bill, a lot of new programming that communities and regions will be able to take advantage of that had not traditionally been available. New programs the agency will be examining. But I think, you know, I, I guess there's sort of, it's a double edged sword in terms of transit in Vermont. I mean, we have the highest level of investment in transit service delivery per capita of any state in the nation. So we have been very much committed to flexing funds from sort of the traditional highway side of the, of the balance sheet to making investments in transit that other states may not have taken the opportunity to do. And yet, because we are so rural, we have so much need. Our demand response system, our, our routes that we have currently are not meeting those demands for people who need to get to medical care or jobs or access shopping. And one of the things we're doing in many other parts of the state, and I don't know if there are any of these projects going on yet in Frank, in the Northwest region, but we're doing microtransit projects. Some many are, there's one that's active, there's many that are being piloted. And while they are designed more specifically to serve kind of a compact area, it's really about, can you provide transit service that deviates from the fixed route so that more people can access rides when they need them? And then also making sure that we are taking fullest advantage of trips that are already being made to pick up people who are going to medical appointments or other sort of Medicaid funded trips or trips funded for other purposes. Might, that might be single rider trips right now. And how can we create the opportunity through technology to fill some of those other seats and provide more access if, if people, you know, have, have the ability to call for and schedule rides through a more odd, complex scheduling system. So we have many things that we're looking at, but I do agree that this is a big area of interest and hopefully growth as we move forward.
Yeah, that's really great conversation there. And I, I think about how in Vermont, we have such a predominantly white population and the numbers of people who are in the traditional groups that we might call minorities are extreme minorities here. But what takes the place are those who live in communities where they don't have access, whether it's access to energy choices or transportation for emergency or routine bases or employment, et cetera. So I appreciate the challenge that you have to try to take that Justice 40 and make it work here in Vermont where we, we, we need to have that forty percent bias towards the, those who have both had inadequate opportunity and they've been actually in some ways attacked and had some rights taken away from them. So appreciate all that you've said there. Yeah, please.
I'd like to add, let's not forget the undocumented people who live in northern Vermont and make our farms viable.
Yep.
Yeah, great point. Thank you, Al. For us in this agricultural community, especially, we have a lot of folks that fit into that. And I, and I know that not only they sometimes suffer, but we owe them so much. So any other questions or comments? Well, again, I want to thank you for being a part of our, let's call it lecture series on justice and equity as we have taken on a journey to try to learn more and to hear what you folks are doing is going to help us immensely. So we'll appreciate what you and the whole team at AOT and V-Trans can share with us because we have so much to learn. And thank you again for tonight, Michelle.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to be with you and have this conversation. And we'll all be learning together and we look forward to hearing about the progress your board makes and hopefully joining you again as we go forward with this.
That would be great.
Take care.
Okay. So as noted in that, this is a part of our overall effort. Catherine has been really extraordinary in identifying someone to guide us through this process and also to find others in the state who can meet with us. Hopefully, every meeting that we have over this first year of our work towards trying to incorporate justice and equity into our overall work, but especially in a year when we are also engaged in a revision of our regional plan. We really have a tremendous opportunity here. We've always had tremendous interest in trying to improve access to employment, to education, transportation. And with this effort that we have now to focus on access to everything to those who have been to those who have been either discriminated upon or just because of the circumstances of their birth or their circumstances at home or in the community are unable to get what they need, it'll be good for us to incorporate that into our regional plan. Any further discussion, questions, comments about this, our second number of different presentations on equity in the region? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. We'll move on then to our commission reports. And we'll start with finance and operations and Harold Garrett.
Thank you, Bill. And another chilling night. The finance committee, we did meet. They met Monday night and we was actually a couple hour meeting, I believe, Catherine. We were pretty close to two hours. We reviewed the budget. We reviewed a whole lot of stuff. And dialogue was, I felt was very good. We had a lot of very good questions coming from the committee. And Catherine and Amy did a fabulous job on presenting the, I mean, the audit and our budgets that we have for the year. And but recommendation is from the, I believe, we all agreed on that we're not going to present the audit to you until February. So we have a chance to digest it a little bit more.
It's the other way around. The budget adjustment holds up until February, but the audit is on for tonight.
Audit is on tonight. Okay, the budget, it's okay. Thank you. And but as far as the finance report, it's, I don't have it on my screen. Catherine, maybe you can share it. And if there's any questions on it, we're fifty percent through the year. And if you look at the expenses, we're running anywhere from forty to fifty percent for the year. So we're great there. The income isn't coming in quite as fast as probably what we'd like. But that is due to the way the funding comes out. So if there's any questions on that, we will do our best to try to answer it for you.
Great. Thanks, Harold. We'll start off and then we can see if there's others that have some questions. I'm always drawn to the big numbers and seven hundred percent is one that jumped out at me today. And Catherine, maybe you can explain for everyone and then Harold, the Northwest Communications Union District Administrative Agreement. I know it's not a large dollar figure there compared to some of the others, but obviously we budgeted eight thousand and we spent fifty six thousand. I assume that's because we're kind of kicking off this process with the hosting of the director of the Communications Union District.
You've just perfectly answered your own question.
Yes.
And the budget, when you see the budget adjustment next month, you'll see the budget reflecting that reality.
So that means that there'll be some sort of income that will help us to cover that?
Yeah, the income, this is actually the income line that you're seeing, that seven hundred percent of our budgeted amount. So we, we have the fifty six thousand dollars in revenue and we only had eight thousand budgeted. And that is to cover the expenses.
That's a good. All right, great. Does anybody else have any questions about the profit loss budget versus actual or the balance sheet or anything in general? We'll talk about the audit that was sent out with a package as item eight on the agenda later.
I have a question that emanates from the audit, but it does pertain to this year's budget. And that is, I noticed in the audit report that the auditors talked about the inflation rate of about two percent historically. Presently, we're at seven percent. Is the finance committee looking at options to address that inflation rate for next year's salary adjustments?
We haven't discussed that. I believe for salary adjustments, that would probably, and correctly Catherine and Bill, would go through the executive committee.
Yeah, we'll start some basic conversations about that as part of the budgeting for FY twenty three, which will start in late April and in May.
Yeah, I think the whole world's hoping that this is a blip and not the start to something worse like was seen in the decades ago with very high inflation rates. And that, for that reason, it being temporary, we might not have to adjust salaries. But certainly, that is something to be thinking about if it persists and it eats away at the power, the economic power of individuals. It could obviously always have an impact on whether people stay with their current employment. And we have exceptional people that do exceptional work in the Regional Planning Commission. We want to make sure we do right by them. So appreciate that warning now.
I think so. There has to be more imaginative thinking. Let's say you're right and the inflation does go down, back down to its past levels. In the interim, we have this year where people are spending more money to do their, to survive. So my thought was, again, excellent staff, maybe instead of having adjustment to salaries, maybe a bonus to cover this period of high inflation for the period that it lasts between now and June thirtieth.
That's a good option for us to consider. Yeah.
The person, I believe the personnel committee would review this first. And they'd get recommendations probably from Catherine and maybe the rest of her staff, Bethany. Then from there, she would probably bring it to the finance committee to get their thoughts on it. Then it would go to the executive committee and we would make the final decision, the executive committee, and bring it for the full board to be ratified. But that sounds pretty close to what we'd have to do.
Yeah, I think you got it, Harold. And that all occurs in the summer with the.
Yes, and I agree with, you know, I think, Al, you're make a very good point. But as a rule, we try to wait until July to see what monies we got left over and everything. Then we hand out the big bonuses. And I shouldn't say big bonuses because none of them were ever big enough. That's for sure. Been there, done that. And I think every one of us who's ever worked has done the same thing. But I was thinking, that's it. We could have had double this or whatever. But we're, it is the finance committee, and I'm sure everybody that's on my finance committee have no, no quorum, you know, no hard feelings or anything like that of handing out a big high bonus if we feel that it's necessary. So if there's money there, it would be distributed.
Let's just make sure we have no Mitch McConnell on the board.
Okay, no, we don't have any. Well, I shouldn't say we don't have any on there because sometimes when we're talking about buying other stuff, we get into some maybe heated arguments. But when it comes to money for their employees, we very seldom have much for discussion. It's usually pretty, everybody's usually on board.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks for the thoughtful comments and questions, Al. Any other questions or comments about the finance committee report? Okay, I can't see any other hands up. We'll move on then to personnel. Lori?
In November, we hired Marlena as our new climate energy planner. And she started, I believe, right at the beginning of January after she was done with school and got home. And then starting this Friday, we are starting the first round of interviews on the Working Communities Challenge position. And maybe second round, second interviews the following week. So that position will probably be filled by mid February, I would guess.
And Catherine, maybe you could just give a short description of what the working communities staff person would be doing.
The Working Communities project is funded through a legislative appropriation by the state of Vermont, and it's run through the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston. In our region, it will be focused on a three year campaign to bring more housing to Franklin and Grand Isle Counties, to build more housing, to convert more housing, to improve more housing, to ensure that there is more availability for everyone who, from those who are moving out of homelessness to those who want to retire and downsize to a smaller place. So it's going to be an all encompassing effort in partnership with the regional development corporations, the social service agencies, private developers, municipalities. It's going to be really a pretty exciting project, I think. And they will be coordinating all of that.
Great, thank you. All right, next is executive committee. We did not meet in January. We do have a meeting scheduled for February, however. So those of you that are on that, please do look forward to an invitation there. Project review, Bob Bierman.
Project review, we've got a report for both December and January in your minutes. The first one, the Purpose Energy Project in Unisburg, that's a waste digestion facility. We've kind of reviewed this a few times. It's still in process. It's part of the concerns is it's actually right on the village, almost in the village. So we're actually looking at it from any concerns from the neighbors and actually putting an equity look at this also as we do this review. There was a site visit that I missed the other day. Hopefully that went fairly well. So we're going to continue working on this one for a few more months, as we understand. The next one is a net meter wind farm activity was in, in Fairfield. It's also one, we actually, we saw an earlier version of this that had less towers. They've added a couple more towers. We only looked at the forty five day notice. We gave some initial comments. We're waiting for the final application to do our full review for that. The next one in South Hero is a battery storage system. They, we had had a forty five day notice on that one before and reviewed it. They did respond to our concerns. And we have found that it is in conformance for the regional plan. There is no substantial regional impact on that one. For January, here's purpose energy again. And I said, we've talked about that a few times. We're going to keep talking about it. The next one here is an expansion of solar facility in Georgia. That was just, again, also just a forty five day notice. So we submitted some commit, some questions and information that we hope they'll respond to when they come in with their final application. See, so based on that, I guess we'd like confirmation that they, that the board agrees with our, the only one that we completed our review with was the South Hero Battery Project. So we need action from the board for that to confirm our, our activity? No?
Bill shake his head. I think it's, I think it's only if it's yes, with a substantial regional impact. And that one says no. But we do appreciate, yeah. And I appreciate personally the work of the committee in reviewing this. This is a very new technology, very important technology. And the dialogue I've heard at the committee meeting is excellent. And I really appreciate your committee and all the work that everyone does there, Bob.
I guess I'd also like to say that the committee has been getting a lot of support from Emily to, to help us through this process because a number of these have been fairly complicated and she tends to put it into a language we can understand.
Yeah, you were mentioning the equity. She did a really good economic analysis of the area around the Purpose Energy Project in Unisburg Falls. And that's again, why we want to make sure we keep this excellent staff.
Even, even when she was sick, Bill.
She was.
And she was, she was sick, really sick.
So sad. Quite a true story.
I hope she's feeling better.
Yes.
Good, good. Glad to hear that. All right, so we'll go to the Transportation Advisory Committee and Harold.
Okay, thanks again, Bill. December, we did not meet. We met in January and we had dialogue. I'm gonna have to ask Bethany to help you out a little bit here. But in February, if anybody on the commission here is interesting, interested, we have invited our legislators to come to the meeting to talk about some of the points that we've been throwing around the table now for the last six months and get their feel on some of the stuff that we're talking about and what they have planned and what they're hearing come down the pike. Bethany, what else did we discuss? One of the things was about, we haven't had a election in a few years because we haven't been able to meet. But we've decided that we're going to wait until after the June elections to, to have our elective chair and a vice chair. We've been lax.
Yeah, so in our, in our rules of procedure for the TAC, we have a October election, which is kind of off cycle with the rest of the work for NRPC. And so the TAC at the, at the next meeting will look at a proposal to change that to June to be more in line with NRPC. And so what will happen is once the TAC, if they approve those changes to the rules of procedure, then they will come to the full NRPC board. And hopefully, we can get that all in place so we can be more by the book come June. And then the, the only other thing with the TAC is we're really focusing and having discussions about the, having the legislator, inviting the legislators. It will be an all remote meeting just to talk about some transportation issues. And this is something that we try to do every other year. I think that's it.
That's about it. Yep.
Harold, what's the date on that meeting?
February tenth, is it, Bethany?
I think February tenth, and it's, it will be six thirty via Zoom. And this is one, if, if, if it seems like more board members would be interested, I can send the link out, the meeting agenda out to the, to the full NRPC board.
I would be interested.
Good thing to send it to everybody. Then everybody would have it. And if you could possibly do that. And we'd love to have all the other board members. We, we, we have pretty well, you know, we have members from most of the communities, but sometimes their reps can't come because they, they work and they miss our meeting or whatever. So if we have a representative for that community that bosses setting on it, it would be great.
Appreciate that, Harold and Bethany.
Yeah, good, good recommendation, Yvonne. I think we should definitely send that out to all the commissioners. All right, thanks, Harold. Thanks, Bethany. We'll move on to the Energy Committee. Bob Bierman again.
All right, Energy Committee, we'll actually talk about later in the agenda.
Okay, very good. And is there anyone that would report for Brownfields? I can make a comment after, but Catherine, maybe you might. I don't know if you have anything relative to the Brownfields Committee?
In addition to the information that's in the staff report, we did get some additional funding through the state of Vermont that we'll be looking to fund Six River Street in Swanton and one other project that I don't remember right now. And then we should note that there will be a board opening on the Brownfields. And then we should note that there will be a board opening on the Brownfields Steering Committee. So if there's a board member who's interested in serving in that role, let Greta or myself or Bill know. You want to take the rest of that, Bill?
Yeah, I, I think we want to try to do something even more impactful for Laz. But Laz has taken on new responsibilities. He's had creeping up of all of his other work and family activities. And he's looking to move on from his being actually a commissioner. He'll probably want to be on as a public member of the Brownfields Committee. And that's one of the committees where we have that built into it. So it'll be great to have his institutional knowledge. But many of you know that Laz has been past chair. He has been with the commission since 1998, so 24 years now. And that's amazing amount of volunteer time and effort. And I think that that warrants our having a future celebration with Laz here with us. One of the reasons that he's has to leave is that the other civic activity that he's now engaged in also meets at this time of the month at the same hour. And he doesn't like missing these meetings and trying to be a part of the commission. He feels like he need to attend these meetings. So we'll reluctantly, reluctantly accept the resignation. But we'll want to send him off with a great deal of appreciation and admiration for everything he's done.
Uh, Bill, I might add that I think that's a good idea. Laz has been on the commission for a long time and he's, he's been diverse, not just Brownfields, where he assisted on the renovations to the office. And I think once we get through this or pass part of this COVID, it would be a good idea to recognize him more formally. That's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, if we're still doing something remote next month, we'll, we'll have some sort of opportunity. Maybe we, he can break away for a few minutes. So everyone can cheer him then. But maybe we had a summer celebration this past year outside at the lakefront. And I think if we might make that a annual opportunity to gather outdoors, that would be another great opportunity to, to honor him. So we'll, we'll look towards that, Neil. Thank you for your thoughts on that. Okay, Elizabeth, anything for the Regional Plan and Policy Committee?
Thank you. We did not meet in January. We are meeting in February. I think it will give us a great opportunity to begin the real work of redoing or updating the regional plan.
Yeah, last meeting was really great and really appreciate the learning I got from that. So look forward to the next. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
We'll turn now to the Vermont Economic Progress Council. Al, any report there?
Unfortunately Comcast has put me back into the early 20th century. I've been cut off from internet service. So I was not able to access the Bepsi's meeting for tomorrow. So I'm unsure, but I will follow it up when I get access again and report next month.
Okay, thank you, Al. We'll turn to Gribout and Transit and I'll let Bob and Catherine decide who will report out on that.
I can, I can hit you up with a couple of things we've been doing. First, first, we're still working on closing out the employee, the union contracts. We've got two out of three closed. The third one, we're well, we're, we're in multiple stages. So we hope we're getting close. We'll, we'll find out in a few days. We have put together the budget for the coming year. As I mentioned earlier, we're, we're struggling with transit budgets. This year isn't quite so bad because again, we're stealing with some of the extra money that's come into the state. So we're, we're okay for a year, but we really need a good, solid plan for how we move forward. And the other one, Bill, I kind of want to touch a little bit is, is GMT is also doing Jedi Justice Equity Diversity Inclusion Activities. That is, is also going to take quite a long time to do it, but we're, we're also headed down that path. So hopefully things that we learn through our activity there, we can also bring back to regional planning and share activities both ways. Any else, Catherine, that we should bring up?
We did review a study that looked at different funding options for public transit in the future. Just to try to set the stage for some fundamental changes to address the budget challenges Bob noted.
And we're, and we're begging for microtransit to also be used in our areas. They do their next round of studies, so.
Yeah, we're looking at St. Albans at least, hopefully as, as the bare minimum for where we have another project and maybe other places too.
Great, thanks, Bob. And thanks for reminding me of what Jedi stands for. I forgot earlier and I've put it on a posted note on my monitor here so I can remember.
I had to say it a lot of times, Bill. It's taken a while.
Yeah, justice, equity, diversity and inclusion. Really neat that it spells out Jedi because it's I don't know, I just like it. So we'll start with, I'm gonna shift rather than to Lynn after, we'll, we'll go to Healthy Roots Advisory Committee. Lynn, and then we've got, we'll close out with the staff reports.
Well, there's, there's a lot in the, in the notes here because they've just finished their annual report. But I do want to just point out that the team, Christine, Peter and Rachel, the gleaning is up 40% from last year and the volunteers that, that helped to glean are up 290%. And they have a, the network of growers and makers that they're working with is up to 180 growers and makers. So they're, they're really growing the program and doing an amazing job. So yeah, they should be applauded for their efforts.
Totally agree. I don't know if there's any staff here from the Healthy Roots Collaborative, but if there's something you'd like to add, please do.
No one's here from Healthier.
Yeah. Catherine, well, Catherine, will the commission get the annual report when it's released?
They will, yes, after the committee reviews it.
Right.
Yeah, I would just throw in here, I've been working at the State Emergency Operations Center and at the Health Department during COVID this whole time. And it's amazing how much hunger exists in Vermont. And for us to be a part of this effort to feed, I hear about the Everyone Eats Program. And so often, and I'm so glad that we're participating in that. Thanks for all you folks are doing and for your leadership in that, Lynn. All right, we'll go to the staff reports. We'll start with Clean Water Advisory Committee.
That committee did not meet. And I think it's going to end up being disbanded as part of the Clean Water Service Provider Implementation, but we'll have to talk about that at a future time.
Okay, okay. Then we move to Northwest Vermont Regional Foundation. Anything there, Catherine?
So we had a meeting, but we didn't have a quorum. So we will meet again and we'll try again in February.
And for those of you that may not know about the foundation, it's not been a highlight item for some time. But the commission decided to bring in a nonprofit entity for the commission. It's called the Northwest Vermont Regional Foundation. It allows the commission to engage through the foundation on those kinds of grants or other funding opportunities that are only for nonprofits. And we haven't had a lot of work mostly because COVID interrupted right at the point that we formed the foundation. But we're very hopeful that it will broaden our opportunity horizon. All right, and then we move on to any of the other staff for reports that they would like to make tonight.
I have a couple of quick things I can, I just wanted to throw out. The, I participated Monday in a meeting that was hosted by Franklin County Industrial Development Corporation to talk about the proposal for welcome centers across the state. Right now, the, most of the rest areas are still closed. And they, the state had an evaluation of all the welcome centers across the state and recommendations for what should happen. The long and the short of it is that the study recommended keeping Alberg and the two Georgia rest areas all closed. And to build a new welcome center in the northwest part of the state. The location, I don't think was quite clear in the report. The meeting that FCI DC hosted on Monday with local legislators, there was broad support for a new welcome center in this region that would serve areas north of Exit 21. So that we can capture people before they leave Franklin County or the opportunity to get to Grand Isle County. And then there was also some express support about keeping Alberg open as well as maintaining Georgia north and southbound, at least until any new facility is built. So that was the long and the short of it. I think all of that is consistent with the position that this board has taken before on the welcome center and rest area question. So there's potentially more to come on this, but I just wanted to give you an update. I don't think you need a new position because I think it's consistent with everything you've done before. So I'll continue to, you know, advocate for that direction in any meetings that I'm in. And Elizabeth was there in her Franklin County Industrial Development Corporation role. So I'll ask if you wanted to add anything there, Elizabeth?
I think just that, so two things. Corey Parent, who represents part of Franklin County, had talked to somebody at the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. And it looks like there is some momentum for a welcome center in, in Northwest Vermont on, somewhere near on Route 89 above Swanton. So whether, you know, how much momentum it has, we do want to advocate for it. And the legend, the delegation is working on a letter. You know, to, to make sure everybody's in support. We did pull in Franklin, I'm sorry, Grand Isle delegation as well. They were not able to attend, but I did follow up with both, both of them. Because their input is, is important too, because, you know, access to the islands and the issue with the Alberg Welcome Center. So that's all I would add. Thank you, Catherine.
Mr. Chair, is there any more from staff, from your position, Catherine?
The only final thing I'll note is that next month, we do have our consultant coming, Jude R. Kelly from Abend and Sun, and she'll be talking to us about diversity and equity issues in the broader scale, about ethical leadership and managing in this crazy time of volatility and change and complexity. And so I think it'll be a really interesting conversation.
Great, yes. Thank you for having that next on our calendar. And any other staff like to make any announcements or presentations? I see Dean, you've lit up.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Staff notes have several items in them related to water resource work. So please let me know if there are any questions that people have. We are getting the Clean Water Service Provider up and running and making good progress. The schedule for creating the basin councils that I've mentioned has slipped a little bit, but we can see the finish line.
Any questions for Dean? All right, any other updates from any staff that are present?
I, I just have, this is Bethany, I just have two updates that I failed to put in, in the report. The first one is I'm part of the Municipal Roads General Permit Working Group. And we've started to work, meet monthly again because the state will be looking to renew the Municipal Roads General Permit for the next cycle, which is January 1st, 2023. So I'll be keeping the TAC appraised of changes, any changes that might come to the permit because that impacts every single one of our towns. And the other working group I wanted to talk about is the VT Culverts Working Group. If you're not aware, VT Culverts is an online mapping resource that includes all the town-owned culverts that are inventoried in the state. And it's been around for, you know, 10, maybe 15 years. But we're moving it to a new platform that will hopefully make it more easy to use. And more, more importantly, it will make it easier to update. So I'll just include the link for the existing website. Very easy in the chat. And hopefully we'll have a new, a new and improved website by spring.
Great, thanks, Bethany. And again, I just want to point out to everyone in your package, there are four full pages of bulleted lists of work that the staff does. And it's amazing. And we're just so very happy to be a part of that. And we thank you all for what you do. Really makes our work such a pleasure when you do so much good for our communities. Okay, are there any other reports that I've missed going through Agenda Item 6? Anything else anyone would like to mention? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to an action item from one of those committees. And that is from the Regional Energy Committee. And we have some draft changes that we'd like to propose. Bob, you're going to lead this, is that correct? Or will it be Catherine?
I will defer to Catherine.
So in your packet, you'll have a framework for an energy committee. Those of you who've been on the board for a while will remember that we used to have a very active energy committee that met quite frequently, most especially around the time that we adopted our energy plan. And then that committee really didn't have much to do after that and kind of stopped meeting and became a bit mothballed. So we took some time at the Executive Committee to look at the charge of this energy committee and make some modifications to it with the idea that now that we have Marlena working with us and a lot to do in the climate and energy realm, that it's a perfect opportunity to rebuild this committee and bring some interested board members and community members together to work with Marlena and help direct her efforts within the region. So you'll see the changes that are proposed there. And if the board adopts those changes, then we will go ahead and start building that committee and start getting it together again. As a reminder, this is, you have two types of committees in your board. You have those that are in the bylaws, the standing committees, which are the finance and executive and personnel, et cetera. And then you have your topical committees, like the Brownfields Committee or the Transportation Advisory Committee, which is a whole other structure, and the Energy Committee. So this is one of those ad hoc committees that you create, you can, you control and you decide what its structure is and how it functions.
Okay, well, thank you for the write-up. It's especially nice that it is one page. And it's actually quite good. One comment I have is, should we change the name to Regional Planning and Climate Commission? We've changed it throughout the paragraphs and bullets there. Seems like it would make sense to link the two because they are.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So that's, that's the only thing I saw.
What was your suggestion, Bill?
Oh, I'm sorry. I've, my stove is kicked on its blower and is reacting to, I think there's cold outside. I'm not sure, but yeah, I thought that we would change the name to Northwest Regional Planning Commission, Regional Energy and Climate Committee.
Okay, energy and climate. I agree, yes.
Okay, so that's one thing I would. Okay, so that's one thing I would um, propose as an amendment to what you have here or a revision to be included in any action taken on this. If that's okay to those of you that put this together, is there? Any objections to that?
No, I, I'd move, I'd move that we uh, adopt this with that change.
Great, thanks Kirk. Uh, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Richard. Is there any further discussion of the motion before us?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
This is Al, this is Al again. I think in, in that we've changed the name now to energy and global and climate change. I think we need to increase our perspective to global uh, in the, in your purpose um, between local communities and various stakeholders and energy planning to provide local, regional and global energy issues. Because what I'm reading is that other countries and smaller entities within other countries are coming up with some very unique ideas to control the climate, which we may think about adopting for Vermont, if not just for our own region, or at least they bring to discussion uh, to Vermonters.
Yeah, I, I, I think that we should look at, at it. I think that's a good idea, right? We should look at ideas from everywhere, but I don't think we're going to have a global impact.
We're not going to have a global impact, except that the global, the globalists might have an impact on Vermont. Not that Vermont's going to change the world, but we might learn something from the other people around the world. And be supportive or change to meet their initiatives that are more helpful to the globe, saving the globe, the planet. I just pointed out, I just think if this is a, a earthly problem that we're going to all have to solve, not anyone is going to be the solution.
Now, Al, you, you use the word and it sounded like you actually used it as a part of one of the sentences here, is that correct? Or was that just? Where, where is that?
Okay, it's the third line down, provide local and regional input regarding energy issues important to the region. So that we also seek out of various stakeholders, the sentence above, various stakeholders and energy planning to provide global, local and regional ideas or whatever. I just want to bring in the concept that we're part of a world, a globe. And that other people may have ideas that we've not thought about, which are helpful to Vermonters in their commitment to uh, reducing the carbon output.
So if I could just offer a suggestion. It recognizes Kirk's point that we may not have an effect on the global climate or energy issues, but they may have an effect on our activities and our circumstances. That the sentence um, that is in the third line of the purpose paragraph be changed to read and to provide local, regional, national and global input regarding or regarding energy issues important to the region. Maybe, and maybe change the word or provide to um, yeah.
I think we should, we should focus on what we can have an influence on.
Okay, is there any other comments relative to this and any further discussion of, in particular, that comment or as well any others?
Well, I don't know how it's structured, but I could see how you would structure it, but I could see where Al's coming from. It's not necessarily we're going to have an impact on the world. But we may pick up some types of uh, environmental or clean burn ideas from another country. They're ahead of us on that. They're three thousand years.
There's, there's no, no doubt about that, but this is providing direction to the committee. Right? It doesn't say they can't take ideas from anywhere, right? This isn't telling them where to take ideas from.
Okay.
If I, if I might jump in, I think there, there is probably a really easy way of addressing this um, in the description that's a very simple fix and addresses Kirk's concern and Al's idea. If you look at the second bullet under general activities, it says provide a forum for exchanging ideas and information among groups working on the state, regional and local level. We could say among groups working on the global, national, state, regional and local level. Because I think that addresses the point you're making, Al, is it's a sharing of ideas. And then it doesn't get into trying to influence global issues, which we're not, not going to do.
Correct.
Yep, that's fine. That's fine, Catherine.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was hoping to find was a place to put it. You found a better place to put it. That, that's great. Would you be open to that um, friendly amendment to your motion Kirk?
Yes.
Thank you. And Richard, would you be open to that as a second to Kirk's original motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this? I think it's particularly valid, given that we are on the border with Canada, that we recognize international information as well as information, international activities. So um, without hearing any further discussion or seeing any hands, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor of this new let's call it uh, guidance for the Northwest Regional Planning Commission Regional Energy and Climate Committee. Please say aye.
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 Anyone oppose, say nay. Anyone abstaining, say. Very good, it passes and I thank you for that.
So, so is this the new REC, the R E C C?
We don't talk about recs.
It's interesting that we, we arrived at that though. Is, I, I didn't see that. Um, it's a better rec, I would say, potentially. So um, I guess the next step is in the last paragraph of this charter, maybe a better word to call this, is that um, we will look at inviting five members with particular knowledge of expertise and energy. And related interest groups to join with a group of up to seven members of the board to make up the committee. I, I think that what would be best is to put this on the agenda for the Executive Committee meeting coming up. And then we could bring this to the full commission for a vote after that. But if you have any people that you would recommend, or if you yourself would like to participate in this, please um, let Catherine know. You can go through me, but I like having one point of contact for these things. So I think it's better to go straight to Catherine. And um, we'll look at that list. Some of you do know some really good people that would make a difference here. I can tell you, I was on the last energy committee and it was incredible experience. I really learned a lot. And um, it's a very um, in, important element of life, as all of you know. So uh, please do consider yourself serving in that. And let Catherine know of your interest. And we will act on that at the next Executive Board meeting and then the next Board of Commissioners meeting. So we have next is our audit and the, sometimes audits make people make funny noises. This uh, audit to me uh, made me feel good. I am glad that they give us uh, what's, what's called a uh, management overview. It's, it's uh, quite nice for us to see what K B S, the auditors do, what they look at, uh, what they don't do. And also to see um, their findings here, but rather than I, I would like to uh, see if there are others here who have worked more closely, who would like to um, make some remarks about the audit before we um, take action on it.
So I can talk about it briefly. It's nothing like talking about the audit at eight forty at night. So my apologies, I should put it earlier on the agenda. I can go through a, a couple of key points about the audit very briefly. So first, and this is the first year that we have re, been required to have a single audit, which is the term for it. And what it means is if you get over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal monies, you have to have an additional audit called a single audit, where they actually test some of your processes and programs to make sure you're in compliance with the federal rules. So this was the first time we've had to have one of those in a really long time. And, and so the audit is a little more extensive than previous years. So two key points that we always note, one, there were no findings. And there were also no noted areas of deficiency. So again, we had a very clean audit. And second is we were in the black. We budgeted to be about, to have about a hundred and two thousand dollar surplus and our surplus was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So we were pretty close to on target in terms of our budget. I think I figured out that was a point two percent. We were off in terms of our, our targets. So that was pretty good. All, so all in all, those are the two super high level points that are, that are important to note. In terms of the single audit where they reviewed our compliance with programs, again, they found no issues. And so that's a real testament to Greta and Amy for their management of the Brownfields Program, because that's one of the programs they looked at. And also Sean and Amy for their management of the Liger Program, which was a, one of the pandemic A programs that came through our office. So that was a nice testament to their work. I'm happy to go into more details or answer questions, but I don't want to overload. Uh, the, the Finance Committee spent quite a bit of time on the audit at their meeting and uh, did vote to recommend its adoption to the board.
Very good. Thank you for that. Really important that you shared that information about the single audit. That, that's important. Harold, is there anything that you would add to this?
No, uh, thank you, Bill. Uh, Catherine covered everything that we uh, you know, discussed or uh, pretty much everything we discussed, because we went into it in great detail, uh, right down to the dates that were wrong.
Yeah, there was some typos that have been fixed.
The typos that it, we, we even found them, uh, correct, Richard? So uh, we uh, the committee really went from one end of that audit all the way to the other. And uh, as you said, Bill, Catherine and Amy and her staff do a fabulous job and uh, uh, I can only remember, and I've been the treasurer for well over fifteen years, right Catherine, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years, something like that. A long time. And uh, I've only seen Catherine mad once. There was a finding on an audit. So it's always nice to see Catherine smile when the audit comes back. She's not smiling at our finance committee. We know that there's something wrong. So uh, kudos again to you and your staff, Catherine.
And to the Finance Committee for their patience in going through it in great detail earlier this week.
I think the main thing that the, the rest of the board should look at is actually report two, and it's one of the last sentences. Given these limitations during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies. That, the crux, crux of the whole thing.
Great, thanks, Richard. And, and you are a member of the Finance Committee and we appreciate your service in reviewing this and in being a part of the committee throughout the year and over many years. Are there any others?
Committee. Don't mind me on the committee.
Like.
Are there, are there any others from the Finance Committee that would like to make a comment on it? Okay, and are there other comments in general from the Commissioners? All right, I think we would be uh, open then to a motion relative to acceptance of this twenty twenty-one audit.
They'll move. Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a move to accept the twenty twenty-one audit. I believe that was Al and then Neil with the second, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And um, is there any further discussion on the motion? All right, I will then call the vote. All in favor of the motion to accept the twenty twenty-one audit, please say aye. Aye. Anyone oppose, please say nay. Anyone abstain? All right, thank you all uh, for your work in the Finance Committee. Thank you all within the staff of the Northwest Regional Planning Commission for being good stewards of the community's money and of the funding that we get from the state and from the United States government. It's a wonderful thing to do so much work well and to be able to keep track of the dollars effectively. Really challenging. Thank you all for that. Last item on the agenda for businesses, any announcements from Commissioners? The only uh, announcement.
Sorry, Sarah has her hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Sarah.
Sorry, um, just very quickly, Fairfax has tomorrow night via Zoom, um, its first forum for the Fairfax Neighbors for Racial Equity. There is a link that you have to get to um, get in if anybody wants to email me at townmanager@fairfax-vt.gov. I'm happy to get you set up on that. And then I just got word that our um, jamboree planned down the community park for this um, Saturday is postponed to February fifth because well, it's a winter jamboree. It's too wintery and cold to have our jamborees. So so much for January thaw. Maybe we'll get one in early February. So just a couple of updates there. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Yeah, I think we're all looking forward to a February thaw. January gave us none. Okay, um, I would just uh, say thank you to all of you for staying late tonight. We did have a very busy agenda. We did not really have a meeting of significant business in December. So we kind of making up and we're starting the new year and I really look forward to continuing with all of you. And I hope you have a, a good night, but first we need a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
We have a motion from Richard. Is there a second?
Elizabeth.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And all in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.